Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, May thirteenth. Our first item is the... Before I do that, I just want to mention that this morning Commissioner Mojo is in St. Paul on our behalf, working on some important legislation. We're down to the final days of that, and she got a call and needed to be down there. And she let me know late yesterday that she was going to be there, and we're glad that she's there, working on behalf of Clay County. So with that, we'll look for approval of the agenda.
So I'll move second.
Motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? And there's no one in the audience, anybody online?
No one online, Mr. Chair.
We'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll move to pay the bills and vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravenhoff and second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next, we have a request approval to... Of addendum number two for the Metro Street Crimes Unit.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Thanks for having me here this morning.
Good.
If I may just start out, it is National Police Week, so I'd just like to recognize the fact that it is National Police Week, and it's a time that we honor those that made the ultimate sacrifice and did not make it back home to their families and their loved ones. So we will be doing a memorial service, I believe, over in Fargo sometime this week. But it is time to honor all law enforcement officers as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
The first item that we have here is the approval of Metro Street Crimes Unit Agreement. This is just updating the agreement. This agreement was first put in place in about 2015. There were just some language changes, more or less. The previous agreement had it written to where it was more of a mutual aid-style agreement, where Metro Street Crimes Unit is... They work daily together on both sides of the river, so it's not really a mutual aid. It's a daily working relationship that we have with them, and this has been reviewed by the county attorney and approved by them.
Sheriff, was the... Is the... I remember when that was set up. Was the... Are the members still the same on that from years ago?
They are, yeah. It does consist of Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, Cass County, Clay County, and there is also now U.S. Marshals on that as well.
Okay. Well, certainly a very valuable... Very valuable to have. So Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, this was put together while I was still chief. Great example of what we do right. And we found that out when there was some legislation that caused our partners on the other side of the river to be reluctant to engage in mutual aid, and I'm glad we got that resolved. This is an invaluable thing. We are basically... Well, we are certainly one community, and this is an example of how our law enforcement people work together to handle it that way. So I... Having said that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the addendum two of Metro Street Crimes Unit Agreement and joint exercise of peace officer duties.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Next, Sheriff.
Next, it's to lease ten vehicles from Enterprise Leasing. Five of the vehicles would be a new lease through Enterprise, and five of them would be just a renewal of a lease, so to speak. We're going to be selling five of our vehicles at our auction, and then five of them will be turned over to Enterprise to be sold. As you can see from what I had there, our internal service funds available are $253,914. And the estimate through Enterprise is $136,332. And I would like to note that last year, when I was here, with the estimates that Enterprise gave us, I'll just give you some rough numbers. They gave us an estimate of $1,002 for a Chrysler Pacifica per month, but the actual amount was $906. And the Durango, they gave us an estimate of $1,018, but the actual estimate was $904. And the Tahos, they gave us an estimate of $1,420, and the actual that we're paying is $1,357. So their estimates are a little bit higher compared to actual, but this is just enough so we can come to the board to get these approved.
So Mark, the numbers you have here, are they... Are these estimates or are these actual quotes from?
These are going to be estimated numbers.
Okay.
And as you can see, these estimated numbers are even less than what they gave us last year. So prices are going down.
So right now, you're... You mentioned that right now that you have $253,000 in the Internal Service Fund for the five vehicles that we owned.
That we own, correct.
And then you're going to sell those five vehicles with all... Would the proceeds of those then go back into the Internal Service Fund?
That is correct. They would.
And then you talked about the fit-up costs in here for the five new ones as well?
Yep.
Is the... And then are we going to be able to transfer any of those fit-ups from the old vehicles to the new ones, or?
Yeah, we try and use as much equipment as possible. For example, this year, we went from a 2021 Tahoe to a 2024 Tahoe, and everything was able to transfer over, so the cost to outfit that Tahoe was about $6,000. One of the things that we kind of have to look for in the future, and I have talked to Lori about this, is that we've had that money in Internal Service for three years, and then after the three years, it would no longer... Those funds wouldn't be available. So in six or nine years, if we end up having to buy new equipment for these vehicles, we wouldn't have those funds available. So Lori was going to look at that and be able to figure out how to work that out in Internal Service, so we would have funds available, so we wouldn't have to have new funds for that.
Why would the funds not be available?
Oh, so Mr. Chair, if you guys recall, when we went to this, Joe, I think Joe was in here, we had a year where we went through a year through the process, and we were able to, based on the resale of the vehicles that we went through, we were able to take everybody who had Internal Service and adjust the amount that we put away each year at a lower amount. And we didn't have that exact number yet for the sheriffs, and so that's where Lori's tweet would be tweaking that.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff, $6,000 for a fit-up if you're transferring the equipment.
Everything, yeah.
What's the cost if it's not a full tran... Or complete transfer?
If it's not a complete transfer, if we're... If we can't transfer everything over, then you're looking at about $15,000 to $18,000. We usually are able to transfer, like, our cameras, our radios, radars, things of that nature. But some things like the push bumpers, the cages, and stuff like that are vehicle-specific.
Well, and the radio equipment, radar and everything's got its own account.
It does, yeah.
For replacement.
It does have its own account for replacement. Yep.
Okay.
And I don't know if Steve has a question for you or to the sheriff. So once we get into this three-year leasing of these vehicles, does that become the line item, budget item, as opposed to a dollar amount that's set aside for Internal Service Fund?
That'd be correct.
So there is no investment into Internal Service Fund, other than for maybe the... The equipment?
Equipment.
Well, and they do... I mean, our leases are set aside, so when they trade them in, you know, when we trade them, our vehicles in on a lease, we generally just turn it in. If there's equity in that lease, that those dollars do go back into the Internal Service.
But there's no additional dollars in the budget?
Correct.
For Internal Service Fund, other than for equipment?
Correct. And if the board recalls, part of the reason why we don't have the updated information is the Sheriff's Department came on app a little bit later on the fleet piece, and so that's why we're still tweaking what the...
Yeah, we are. And we do Internal Service that equipment as well, so just so we have those funds available, so we don't have to come back and ask for additional funding for equipment, and so we do Internal Service that equipment. But, yeah.
Yes, yes, Joe.
Sheriff, does this take all your vehicles to put them into lease, then?
It'll... It's not all of them yet. We're not to that point, but a good majority of them now will be leased.
And then with these five that you plan on auctioning, do we need to have a motion on that to allow them to auction those off?
We've never done that in the past. We've just... We've been able to auction them off. We follow the proper notices.
I think what... Just with what he's showing here, he's showing that they're to be sold at auction. So I think we... It's just an automatic approval, as we approve is what he's proposing. Commissioner Kravenoff.
Yeah, just a general question from the past. Some of these... You've been doing this program like three years now or so?
Yeah.
Yeah. And are you seeing the savings on it pretty continual over the years as you're doing the trades? Or is there some fluctuation? And then the second part was, I remember about a year ago, I think it was, you were, you know, you were desiring Tahos, and they were in short supply. Is some of that turned around now? You're getting the product you want?
Yeah, to answer the first part of the question, I believe we are seeing slight savings in our Internal Service because of that. It's really hard to make that determination, because everything has gone up as well. Over the past couple of years, everything has kind of climbed as far as prices. So it's really hard to say exactly what we're seeing, but I do believe there is a bit of a savings there. And then the second part of your question regarding the Tahos, they are starting to get a little bit easier to acquire. But we are still waiting for five more vehicles to come in yet this year, so I'm hoping they do arrive soon.
And does that make any difference on the fit-up?
If we can go Tahoe to Tahoe, that does... That is a cost savings. If we have to go from like Tahoe to Durango or something like that, then there is an additional cost to that. The other additional cost that does occur is that the vehicle manufacturers do like to do redesigns of their cars. And sometimes when they do the redesign of their cars, then, you know, some things don't fit. For example, in 2025, Chevy Tahoe did a refresh of the front end of their car, so our push bumpers won't fit. So we have to get new push bumpers. Now I know in 2027, they're going to do a full redesign. So then we're going to have to take a look at what's going to be able to transfer over and things like that.
Sheriff, on the five new vehicles, those will obviously need to be fitted new with equipment, right?
Some of them will be able to transfer that equipment over.
Well... Okay, so you're going to be taking the equipment out of the vehicles that we're turning in?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then there's still... And then there's also $55,000 in the Internal Service Fund for equipment?
Yeah, for the five vehicles that are currently leased, apparently they're just doing the equipment for outfit and things like that. They have a separate account for that.
Okay. And then the 250... Going back to the 253 for the new leases, the total annual lease is 136 for all of them, for all 10. And are you anticipating having to pull some funds out of that 253 to fit up? Any of those?
Yes, there will be some funds that have to come out of that to fit those cars up, because the $55,000 will not cover that.
Okay. All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the 10 vehicles from Enterprise Leasing for the Sheriff's.
Ms. Chair, I move we approve the 10 vehicles from Enterprise Leasing for the Sheriff's Office for 2026.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebner, second by Commissioner Kravenhoff. And again, within that, that also going to Commissioner Bear, the intention would be for five vehicles to be sold at auction.
Correct. I include that.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
And Mr. Sheriff, if I could?
Yes, oh, yeah.
On an annual basis, the Sheriff's Department has a compliance review from a training perspective from the Minnesota Post Board. And this week, I received notification that the Sheriff's Department passed their review. Again, we're fortunate to have professional, skilled, trained men and women in our Sheriff's Department, and I think that this just goes to show, again, the great work that they do and making sure that they're up to date with all the, not only the legislative trainings that they're required, but also the departmental. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our request approval for the yearly supply bids. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. Yes, so the first item I have is approval of the yearly supply bids. We did open these on May 7th, and this covers corrugated metal culverts, furnishing bituminous asphalt, and then rental of construction equipment. So what this does is, when we buy culverts throughout the year, it just gives us a locked-in price for the entire year, as well as if we need to go buy mix from either Northern or FM asphalt, we have a price for that. And then rental of construction equipment, if we ever need to rent something from somebody, we have a set price that we can go off of as well. So for that, I would just be looking for a motion to approve all bids, because that just gives us flexibility to go wherever we need to in case.
And I, you know, and obviously, for example, when it comes to the construction equipment, not all of these ones that we're approving here are the same rates. However, when you have to consider where the work might be being done, it might be cheaper to be having somebody from the Holly area, for example, do it than have somebody come from local. So that's why we approve them all and allows you some discretion. And it also means that maybe one company might not be available.
Exactly.
Or the next one. So it's good to have all of them approved upfront, so. Okay, yes, Commissioner Bear.
Do we rent a lot of equipment?
Not a lot. Kind of from my understanding is why we first started doing this was during flood events. We never had set equipment rates, so it's more so in case we do ever flood, we have set equipment rates.
Yeah, I think there's really two times when it can be really used. One would be during flooding, and another one would be during real heavy, heavy winters, like the winter of 96, 97, when, you know, we have... We had snow eight feet deep on every county road we had, so. So that's kind of the reason for that kind of stuff.
Like, two years ago, we rented a blazer for a month to push snow back.
And one year, we rented snow blowers too, I think.
Yep.
Does... Did these bids go from April 2025 to a full calendar year?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the yearly supply bids as recommended in the packet.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the yearly supply bids as recommended in the packet.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right, next, we have our request approval of four pickups for the Highway Department.
Oh, five.
Oh, excuse me. I crossed one up. Gravel bids.
Yes.
We got one bidder.
We did receive two bids for gravel, one from Turner Sand and Gravel, and one from Fitzgerald Construction. This is not out of the norm. I did see a little bit of an increase in gravel prices, which was to be expected. But my recommended motion would be to accept low bid of Turner Sand and Gravel for Townships 1 through 30. That's just... That mainly just means that we split out our county graveling by township, so we get a price for each township. Turner did not bid. There was three townships that went on the bid with us. He did not bid any of those, so it's all county work on this contract.
So by doing this, and then the townships get that same rate? Is that correct for...
No.
They get their own?
There was three townships, 15A, 19A, and 30A. It was Highland Grove, Holly, and Tansom. Did try to go on the bid, but Turner did not provide them a number. Because from in talking to Turner, he thinks he can do it cheaper for the townships if he doesn't have to join the county bid, so that's what he did this year. So that's...
So the townships are on their own for getting their own bids?
Yep.
It seems to me back in the years when I was on the township board that the townships were able to get the county rate, and that's how they kind of did it back then.
That was probably also when we were allowing township gravel out of the Felton pit, too, and now that that's heavily restricted due to the Dakota skipper, I think that's changed.
Okay.
And right around the time when we do our yearly maintenance contract rate, we send out emails and letters to all the townships, letting them, if they want to join our gravel bid, that they can do so, but like I said, there was only three that joined this year.
Okay. All right, so we're looking for approval of the gravel bid from Turner Sand and Gravel for Townships 1 through 30.
I can't motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Now we'll get into the purchase of four pickups for the Highway Department.
Yeah, so I'm seeking approval to purchase four pickups from Nelson Auto Center. This is a cooperative purchasing contract. So the three half-ton pickups that I'm looking to purchase are Ford F-150s. Those are used by three of our engineering technicians in the summertime, and then the wintertime, they get used by maintenance staff to check roads. And then the three-quarter ton is a GMC that is to be used by our road foreman. So all four existing pickups that we have will be handed down to our maintenance department. And then, once we actually know that we're going to get these vehicles, I'll be coming back for approval to sell some of the older two-wheel-drive pickups that we have.
And you want to explain?
Yes, so on my spreadsheet, so Unit 105, 107, and 119 are the half-ton pickups. The cooperative purchasing price with tax is $52,913.81 each. And then the Unit 114, which is used by our road foreman, is a three-quarter ton. And the purchase price after tax for that one is $59,445.16. And the Internal Service Fund is short by $578.27 with tax, but after we sell those vehicles, we'll be well ahead, and that money will go back into the Internal Service Fund.
Just a curious question. How do you determine when you want to get new vehicles?
So in our Internal Service Fund, there's a life that's expected that we put in that after five or seven years, that vehicle should be fully funded. Usually, it's about five. With these increases in prices that we've seen, engineering tech pickups we have now, I believe, are eight, so they've gone three years past.
About how many mile... I'm sure it varies, but what's the range in miles?
So on the three tech pickups, they vary greatly. So the one that's used for bridge inspections and used the most by the maintenance department, I think, is at about $120,000. But we're not selling that. That's going down to the maintenance department.
Yeah.
I would guess the ones that we're going to sell, around the time we would sell, would be well over $150.
And those are the two-wheel-drive ones?
Correct.
Yeah. And you're curious, just because I do it, but do you do extended warranties to help you on that?
On the pickups, we don't. For the most part, I mean, with having a shop foreman and a mechanic in-house, we try to fix what we can in-house, if it's not... If it's outside that standard warranty.
Yeah, right. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Bear.
One question. I see that you have an upgrade from XL to XLT. Is that... That's interior stuff. Is that necessary?
So the... I think you see that package that's like the workstation package. I don't know. I don't have that sheet exactly.
You have mobile office package in the total.
Yep, to go with the mobile office package, you had to upgrade to XLT, so it doesn't... Wasn't for an interior purpose. It was so...
You have to plug in everything that's in the vehicle.
Yeah, so the engineering technicians, obviously, are working on their laptops, and having the in-board inverters is a big deal for us.
That makes sense.
It gets kind of goofy with these pickups when you... I mean, different trim levels, you add one thing and it's stepped up.
I know.
So and by the... This was brought through our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, too, and it was recommended for approval by Highway Tracking. Just one question. As we just went through with our Sheriff's Department, and a lot of our vehicles, we lease, and I'm just curious as to...
So, and that's another thing when you're going for, as far as asking when we replace vehicles. So Joe and I spent well over a year looking at leasing for the Highway Department. Didn't make sense for a few different reasons. The last vehicles we looked at, it was actually cheaper to purchase them. And then just how we kind of handle internally handing vehicles down and how long we keep them, we felt as though we'd get more bang for our buck if we purchased them.
Very good.
You'll be auctioning off four vehicles here once you get these, and then everybody gets handed down there next year.
Yep. And the only reason I don't have vehicles to sell today is there's a note on those quotes, too, that's basically if we don't get the vehicles, we're not price locked, so there's not... There's a good chance we get them, but I think after everything that's happened in the vehicle world, they've thrown that caveat on there now.
All right.
Okay, well, on my motion to approve the purchase of the four pickups with Nelson Auto, right?
Yep.
And $52,913.81 each for the units. 105, 107, 119, and $59,445.16 for Unit 114.
Second.
There are motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion?
One question to Justin there. Nelson Auto Center, how do we decide to buy from them?
So they offer the cooperative purchasing. It's not source well. It's a state contract. I don't remember the name of it. But that allows us to sole-source it, whereas we've tried to get them from Holly before, and they don't participate in cooperative purchasing, so we have to advertise for bids, and it's just a lot easier to go.
Nelson can bring in a GMC and the Fords there, all at one location.
Yep.
Or it's from Holly and...
All right, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. That is done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. See you at noon. All right, next, we have our risk management and MCIT presentation. Yes. Do you prefer the podium or would you rather?
He is... Yes, he is nursing an injury, so he's...
Oh, okay.
He's the name.
Not a problem.
We're going to modify today.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Today, I'm here to... I have Joe Smensky here from MCIT, and he's going to be giving a presentation, an update to the board as far as MCIT goes. I thought, real quick, I would sneak in before him and just do a quick risk management policy update on just a review of what we've done in the last couple of years, so I'm going to make it kind of short and then turn it over to him. Joe and I are definitely two different presentations today, but we have come to find that it's a... They both go hand in hand, and we work closely together, so I'll do this quick, and then I'll turn it over to Joe, so. So I'm just going to touch on our risk management policy. Basically, our purpose, a couple of years ago, we had formed this policy. Our purpose is to create a process for Clay County, which would identify, measure, and treat property liability, income, and personnel exposures to loss. So it's our goal of risk management is to the preservation of physical and human asset of Clay County and develop a common understanding of risk across the county departments. That was our main... One of our main issues is trying to get one uniform process. And then our risk management is a shared responsibility that extends to all employees, while specific related tasks are assigned to various groups and levels within the organization. Just a quick history, this was the vision of the county administrator. A couple of years ago, when the facilities director position was created, this is a task he felt we should have, and so we did that. The board passed policy in 2023, and at that same time, an MCIT administrators group was formed, is what we're calling it. And we work closely with risk and loss control consultants. I believe, Joe, you're the risk consultant. We call you the risk consultant, because we ask you all the questions, so. And then we formed a policy group that looks at each policy, looks at all the policies each year, make sure they're updated. And we've made sure that we collaborate with our management team during this process, and we feel that... And we feel that this policy really acts as the overall reference policy to all other policies that might have some risk within those policies, so. So here's just a, I think I got ahead of you. Here's just a snapshot of, of what we think risk management is for our, for the county. Within each one of these categories, there's a lot going on within, but this is just a high-level shot. You could see, we have a lot going on with our auto and fleet vehicle policy. Right below it, we have compliance, that's something Rory's been working heavily on. We have inland marine, which is all our mobile equipment. Safety, our safety program, our, our safety committee does meet once quarterly and we go over and make sure our safety program is, is implemented. We have our technology and electronic data processing, that's something Rory's also involved in. And then our record retention, that's, we're working on that this year. That's, I, I think one of our angles, there's the figure out what's the best way to keep records. And then personal employment, and then our contracts, and of course, our buildings. So that's just a snapshot of, there's a lot going on with each one of these, but, but that's just kind of a high-level look. So here is our Clay County MCIT administrators group, this has been very beneficial. We meet quarterly to go over certain things, we ask questions. The department, the MCIT administrator was selected for each department. Those are typically the people that deal with, with all the MCIT claims and adding stuff. So our central administration, central administration assistant, which is Sarah, she kind of represents all the smaller little departments. So myself, my, my department, we, I have Betty that works and there's a lot going on there, but there's other little departments that don't always have a lot going on and Sarah's kind of stepped in and she, she's who they go to, so. And then we, we do, again, we, we meet quarterly. And then, once a year, this group actually attends the annual MCIT coverage, it's actually online. We do that once a year, it used to be just Steve and I, but we've, there's ten more people added to that, so it's, it's a good thing, so. So this is our, kind of our flow chart here of who's responsible for what, and I think that's really cut down the gaps that we were finding prior to this, so. Also, we created a risk, quarterly risk assessment every, we do this, we send this out and it's really just a line of questioning that, to remind department heads and representatives for each of their department. Did you buy something? Have you taken something off? It really just takes you through and makes a person think what, to make sure that you've done the right thing and added stuff to it. We've found this has been very helpful, caught a few things, and it's, we do this every quarterly and it, some departments, it's just, they don't buy a lot of stuff, but some do, and it's just a real good reminder and it's been good. I do get, we get, when this comes in, I do review it with, with my, my assistant and we just make sure that that was added. So it's been a, definitely a benefit. Basically, a conclusion with this, we feel that with this risk is being actively managed. That's, that's kind of what I've been doing. The MCIT administrators group, they always control inventory and update MCIT schedules, so. And we do our quarterly risk assessment and we have, we have, we have formed a, a kind of a central file where we keep all our records and they all know where they are and it's been a huge benefit. And I guess lastly, it's been, we really tie all our other, our policies together to, to ensure that we're, we're in compliance. So, questions for me, I know it's kind of quick, but.
Questions?
Okay, with that, I'll, I'll actually turn it over to Joe and he'll, he'll give his update.
We're going to go from Joe to Joe.
Joe to Joe, yep, the better Joe.
Good taste in names.
Yep.
Again, my name is Joe Semensky, I'm a risk management consultant with MCIT or the Minnesota Counties and Governmental Trust, here to report to you on, on MCIT, talk a little bit about what MCIT is, what we do, some of what we don't, talk about some of the numbers over the last year. So, and some of the issues that everybody faces, so. The first item about benefits from the risk sharing pool, we're talking about what MCIT is. We're a joint powers entity formed by the counties and associated members to provide risk management and, and claim payments. And we're tailored to government operations. It's specialized sets of coverages and comprehensive coverages for the government operations. The contributions are there, the contributions or payments from the members are there to have enough to cover claims and our services and run a, a stable business and, and while not over collecting. That's, and all the pricing is, is an important aspect of what we do and it's part of our mission statement. One of the unique aspects of what we are, we're not an insurance company, we provide those insurance services, but there's other things that set us apart from the insurance industry. The board of directors for MCIT are your peers, you know, other commissioners, administrators, auditor. And they feel the, the same effect that you feel in their decisions, so. Kind of a nice aspect of what we do. Beyond the claims, we have risk management consultants like myself and loss control services, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go. The commissioners, it's important to know that you can make a big difference. Some of the things that we talk about in the second panel is not necessarily a list of what you need to start doing, but what you just continue to do well. Things like learning how coverage applies before making final decisions. Having your contracts reviewed by the county attorney, risk management consultants, very important aspect of what you do. As everybody knows, staying alert for data and cybersecurity threats, that's everybody's world right now. Supporting safety and risk management. I know the county's really doing a lot to develop that program and supporting that is, is vital. Safety committees and return injuries, return injured employees to work programs. All of our members do their part and we want, we, we want to encourage that to keep occurring, such as mitigating claims, collaborating with MCIT when claims occur, and fulfilling financial obligations. Second page, we'll talk a little bit about reinsurance. If you're not familiar, reinsurance is basically the reinsurance, or the insurance for the insurance company, or in this case, the pool. This is something that's really affected our organization and the pricing and affects all the members. Property reinsurance has increased ten percent from two thousand twenty-four due to a large rise in the value of, of properties. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next panel. The chart provides a split between property and liability, you're going to see the properties climbing. One of the major things that we're working through with pricing. Some of the things we're doing to try to feather this effect back to the members and, and lessen the impact is in, in, in the deductibles, or what we would call the retention for the reinsurance. We have increased our retention in casualty or liability claims from eight hundred and fifty to a million. And that saved a twenty-one point five percent increase in the reinsurance premium. We also increased work comp from five hundred to a million on the retention and that saved four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in premiums. So we're trying to do what we can and examine all our options to feather that effect back in a more, you know, gradual manner. The next window, we're talking about total insured values continuing to climb.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Sure can.
Just while we're on the reinsurance. Piece, so that, that the rise seems to be in the property.
Yes.
It, and because we're dealing with reinsurance, are those reinsurance rates based on what might be going, happening throughout the country?
Yep.
Versus, versus claims that are specific to county governments in Minnesota?
Very astute question. Reinsurance is purchased from the private market and it is affected by what's going on in the world overall. That you can't get around.
Just like a homeowner's insurance.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
You might not have a claim on your house, but your.
Well, that big time too, I, I, that's a really good point. Separating that, so we're getting it from a couple of different angles when it comes to property prices, which is what we're talking about in the next window. If you look at the amounts that the value of the property alone is going up, it's going up and, and it's increasing at an increasing rate, so it's looking less like a graph and more like a hockey stick, you know, unfortunately, we're not seeing the plateau in property values. So that directly impacts the cost to insure said values or cover said values in our world. So we're getting hit at, you know, from, in property alone, in that dramatic increase in labor and, and materials and, and also from the reinsurance costs going up, so we're getting it from a couple of different angles. And, you know, with the property rising and, and, and rising at such a dramatic rate, you, you can't get around that it costs more dollars to cover the same properties and repair them when the bad things happen, so. And I think you had your appraisal in two thousand twenty-three, we do, every five years, we, we do an appraisal on the building values to help you set your values for your coverages. And so two thousand twenty-three is actually a decent time, so you know, you're already right at the head of when all these, the, the major raises are occurring. So there'll be another one in five years, hopefully things plateau a little bit, it's a little bit easier on the budgeting side, obviously, for you. Some of the other things to talk about on the positive side of property, there's a few enhancements for equipment breakdown coverage. And so impairment to electric circuitry was added. Some subcoverages for maintaining green designation with an equipment breakdown claim, the additional cost for that and some off-premises coverage for equipment breakdown claims. So a little bit of a positive side that we're able to expand some of the coverages, that's through Hartford Steam Boiler, who does the reinsurance for equipment breakdown claims. The next window talks about rates, contributions, and they're there to anticipate the expenses. And again, you're going to see in the blue, which is property and liability, a higher number on the increase end of things, and that's in good part due to what we were just talking about with property, that's really affecting everybody the most. You'll see on the, on the bottom, the orange, the workers' compensation, there's a huge drop there in two thousand twenty-three. And what that is, just out of curiosity, a lot of the COVID claims have, have fallen off and, and so that's, that's a good sign too, that the world's moving on there. Dividends, for approximately thirty years, we've been able to give a dividend back to, to members when, when it's financially and actuarially, actuarially sound. This year, it's based on work comp only due to the issues with property. And you see a, a solid dividend there returned to the county. The next window, we're talking about cyber claims. Yep, please do.
Paul, can you get closer to your mic? Thank you.
Yeah. Some of the, when it comes to the claims and that type thing, does that seem to have a consistent relationship with the growth of, of people, you know, that are in the system? You know, for claims or?
Are you talking about workers' compensation?
Yep.
Yeah, it can, if there's more in there, your odds are that you're going to have more losses. We're going to talk a little bit more about mod rates on, on the next page, which gets into what, you know, the experience rating end of things, which has to do with an actual rating of what's going on by member. You got good numbers to report on, by the way, so.
Okay.
A little sneaky, but yes. So there's, there's that generalized view of it and it's, but there's individualized things to, to analyze too, as far as how your, each member is doing. So, but yes, it can have a general effect. The more, the more employees, the more risk there's going to be that you're taking on, so. Good question.
Thank you.
With cyber claims, I did want to point out that if you look at the bottom line on the graph, we're seeing a slight trend upward in cyber claims, it probably won't shock anybody. There's a major spike in two thousand twenty-three, but you see that it's coming back down again. That's obviously at least a good sign that we're moving in a positive direction there. Most of that is due to the fact that we've had a drop in ransomware claims. So they've fallen off dramatically and that's, that's just a, a, a compliment to all the members that everybody's doing everything they can to, to try to, you know, stop that, you know, prevent it. And there's been a lot of work on that, so that's a positive for, for the members. Most of it has to do with, with emails, everything starts with email, eighty-five to ninety percent of the claims with cyber start somehow with email. So email filtering and beefing up systems and training members to keep away from clickbait is, is, is what everybody's doing and everybody's doing a good job and this is at least showing some improvement there. So even though it's a very challenging environment. On the last page, we, like I mentioned, we're going to talk about work comp claims. The experience rating has to do with just comparing the, the number and the cost of work comp claims and the amount in your payroll specifically. And it's an average for, or an expected amount of claim activity and, and average, so to speak. Anything over one point oh costs you additional contributions, anything below one point oh saves you money. This actually shows a, a solid savings to, to an excellent number and consistently excellent numbers under one point oh. Actually, under point nine. And kudos to the county and, and, you know, this, this goes to the risk management efforts that, that Clay has done on a, on a regular basis. These numbers are phenomenal and you should be happy about that, continue to do what you're doing. That's where the rubber meets the road on dollars, this shows you how much money was saved by having, you know, safety measures in play to take care of your people and it turns into dollars, so congratulations on that. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you give me a definition, if you will, of modification, what that can be a little more depth?
The moderate?
Yeah.
It's basically.
Modification factor, so just curious how that word is used.
It's, it's, it's experience rating in short, so it's taking into effect what claims you've had. And it compares that with the amount of, they, they put a class code on your positions. So this position is this class code and it's a complicated equation, which compares what you have for complicat, for, for risk factors by position and compares with the claims you actually had. And it intersects them to come up with this, this formula to, to, to figure out what your contribution's going to be. And so those are the two factors that are used to develop the mod rate and the, the, even point or the average point is one point oh, that's what's expected. Anything over one point oh for a mod rate shows an opportunity to improve potentially. Anything under is, shows you're doing what you need to do. So I don't know if that, I, I, it's hard to give an exact definition because the, the equation's pretty complex, but those are the major factors and I hope that helps.
Yeah, it did.
So, and, and again, really well there. The, thanks for the question. The, the next graph just shows the workers' comp and the property and liability annual claim averages. Shows the number of claims and the amount paid per claim. Some of the things that'll stand out to you, if you look on the lower side for property and liability, you have the auto claims and number of claims. At a thousand seems to stand out, I don't think that's a negative trend, it is what it is. That's part of what our, our pool absorbs with the specialized coverages. The law enforcement liability, as we know, it's a tough environment out there for liability claims with law enforcement and that's been a high number for, for years for, for the world that we live in. Sheriff in jail for workers' compensation is also, shows a, a lot of claims, but you have to keep in mind too, that's a twenty-four seven job, dangerous job that they do for us, so. Not necessarily something that's trending up, it just, that's the way it is. So just a few things to look at there. With the last section, we're, we're talking about some of the other services that we provide, that MCIT provides our members. As mentioned before, risk management and, and loss control consultants to discuss safety and loss control end of things, risk management, we work closely. I've, I've talked a number of times with, with Steve and Joe from the claims end of it in, in a prior position I was in and with risk management, they do a great job in communicating and getting things out there to just to talk about it and see what we need to do to, you know, improvement opportunities or things to consider when, when you have those, you know, extreme situations that you're working through. A lot of compliments I have for them. The resource-rich website, I do encourage you, if you have time, to look at the website, look at the search engine. There's a lot of great material in there that you might be able to use. Open Meeting Law, for example, if there's some things you want to touch up on, there's a. a lot of good information that we've developed in there. But type in anything that has to do with county operations, and there's some great resources. I'm sure that, I know for a fact that Joe looks at it on a regular basis, I'm sure Steve, too. Just, I encourage you to look at that. Some of the other programs and services that are included with the membership are Employee Assistance Program. And you have high utilization for the Employee Assistance Program. Again, that's a, that's a good thing to see. Numbers over seven, over six in the last couple of years, anything over four is considered high utilization for using the program to take care of your, of your employees. Benchmark Analytics for the Sheriff's Office for Risk Mitigation, Workplace Injury Hotline to help triage some of the middle, mid-level injuries and get those reported. Membership to the Minnesota Safety Council, a lot of good information there. HSB or Hartford Steam Boiler and Pressure Vessel Inspection. So they take care of our equipment breakdown claims from a reinsurance standpoint, and they take care of all the dangerous pressure vessels that have to be inspected by state requirement. There's also training, such as seminars and webinars and speakers for onsite training that are provided. Peace Officer Accredited Training Online or Patrol and Defensive Driver Training through the Minnesota Safety Council. So that's it in a nutshell. I tried to move quickly with respect to time, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to hear them.
Any questions for Joe?
Good, Mr. Chair. We really appreciate MCIT, Joe, and the staff at MCIT. We don't, we really view them as a true resource, whether it's bringing MCIT through our correctional facility, whether it's going through just our regular claims, but also, also different scenarios that we're going through contracts and working with Brian and MCIT to make sure that we have the proper, proper work there. And so we really, I know Joe specifically in his risk manager role, works closely with them, we're fortunate to have the relationship that we do.
I agree, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes, Joe.
Yes, I just wanted to comment, working with Joe, and we created this risk management policy the last few years. Anytime we throw any questions, scenarios, when our MCIT administrative group gets together, we always have a whole bunch of questions. We throw it at Joe, he just doesn't give us one-line answers. By the time he's done, we understand and we, and he's guided us to the right direction.
So I.
Hope that's a compliment.
Oh, it's, it's, it's a huge, in this kind of thing, it is a huge compliment, and he really clarifies things. So we do appreciate how you get back to us quickly and your help to get this risk management up and going, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Joe, for being here today and providing us with your update.
I appreciate your time. Thank you for the questions, and again, thanks for inviting me.
Thank you.
Good day.
All right, next we have West Central Initiative update. We have Lynn and Greg here this morning. Good morning, Greg. Either wherever you like.
Thank you.
Just make sure your mic is green.
Green, go.
Green is go.
Morning, Commissioners.
Oh, I like that check.
Staff. Yeah, I know. Well, we should write a big, like, do not cash across the top.
Oh, darn.
While Greg is handing out a couple of publications here, I just want to get us started. I'm Rebecca Lynn Peterson, I'm the Director of Development and Philanthropic Services. And let me explain the check, but first I want to say, we usually come about this time every year to do updates and to thank you for your ongoing partnership and support. So as you know, we, this is not a meeting where we ask. I'll send a letter to Stephen later, and then you can discuss without us present. And I did get your letter, Stephen. Consider your request during these uncertain times. So I, I took that wholeheartedly. So instead of bringing our packet full of many papers, we have a couple of publications that I think speak to our work well. And so an explanation of the check on the front, I want you to pull out this one pager on the inside cover. We created this last year because people ask us, well, what's that initiative? I've heard of you, but what do you do? And it's hard to, in an elevator speech, explain that. So we have it in a one-pager, and on the flip side, you'll see a list of all of the programs that we offer. And I'm going to let Greg talk a little bit more about our economic development work. But on the very front, since 1986, and as you'll notice, we're celebrating our 40th year next year, we've reinvested $59 million in loans throughout our nine-county region, $84 million in grants, the jobs we've helped create, and the businesses we've impacted. So you've been part of that. And so we're here to thank you for supporting us in our work, but also hoping to show you your reinvestment in the community. So that $18 million check reflects the dollars that we've returned to Clay County in grants and loans over the past almost 40 years. So that's a little description about the check, somebody said at another county visit. Well, next year, we expect one that we can cash. And then our annual report is just a nice snapshot of all our programs. I'm going to ask you to turn to the back. We're going to start at the back, inside cover. We have, oh yeah, this one, sorry, our annual report. The Almanac is just another fun publication. So we've added some staff because we got some grant money for some special programs for the next couple of years. We also have a couple of new board members, one of them from Clay County, Lisa Tilletson. She joins Janice Tweet on our WCI Board. And Paul Krabenhoff has been on our EDD Board, and Greg will talk a little bit more about that. Then if you flip forward, there's a list of our grant recipients, a list of our contributors, and you're listed there as our county contributor, and then a number of programs. We have just finished our, like, kickoff campaign to start a ripple of generosity, just showing people how a little bit can go a long way. Individuals who contribute, as well as units of government and different corporations. We continue to do our work in sustainable agriculture, transportation planning, early childhood work, economic development work, and Greg will talk about that a little bit further. And then rural belonging and rural democracy. So we've just distributed our sponsorship grants for our Welcoming Week events, and I know that Morehead is very busy in that regard, as are some of our other Clay County communities. And then our Rural Democracy Program continues to help people through leadership training for Commissioner posts, council posts, school board posts. We're not trying to take your jobs away from you, we're just trying to train the next generation. So with that, and then also the view from here, just our almanac, we had an event a couple of weeks ago, just looking at our region. So the thing that's nice about these is you don't have to, like, throw them in the recycling, you can put them in your dentist's office or something like that, so feel free to share. I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thanks, Rebecca, and thank you for the opportunity to come and speak again, Mr. Chair and members of the County Board. I am Greg Wagner, I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development at West Central. And so I oversee our lending and our economic development programs. And I like doing that work because oftentimes it's very visible and the impact is realized quite quickly. Because of our economic development work and our kind of partnerships with both the state and the federal government, we've been able to attract some resources for the region and for Clay County that is not what you would traditionally see primarily, you know, during the pandemic. And then there's been some partnerships that have extended beyond that with the state of Minnesota. The Main Street Revitalization Program, which was a sizable program from the state, West Central Initiative applied for that on behalf of three corridors, including the County 10 Corridor, which ran through, starting at the river here in Morehead on Center Avenue, and extended all the way to Bluffton on the far east side of our region. We've allocated a million dollars so far in grants to businesses along that Highway 10 Corridor in Clay County. So that's Morehead, Dilworth, and beyond. And then last year, we received an allocation through the Promise Act Program from the state, both loans and grants. It was a very competitive grant program. We had 451 applications and were able to award 52 in total across our nine-county service area. Three of those were in Clay County. So that was a sizable investment, I think it was about $70,000 directly to Clay County businesses that had been pretty significantly impacted financially over the course of inflation and supply chain challenges. And then in the last year, we've done just under $1 million, and actually, I should preface it, not the last year, the last 17 months, we've done $950,000 in loans to Clay County businesses. And then the total grants and loans invested in Clay County in the last 17 months has been $2.8 million. So an impact that's, you know, near-term, as an example of this total $18 million in investment for the county. Some of the additional work we do as the Economic Development District, we have a partnership with the Federal EDA. Commissioner Krabenhoff is the Clay County Representative on that board. That allows us to attract federal funding resources from the Economic Development Administration to our region and do economic development work for communities that don't necessarily have the staff capacity to do so, or we partner with the staff in developing that. One of the big deliverables we have for that Economic Development District is a five-year regional economic development strategy called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs. We are nearing the end of our current five-year plan, and so in 2027, we'll be releasing a new five-year SEDs, and that will identify priorities, strategies, and goals for economic development for the region. We've already started the initial information gathering, be it data or strengths, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis with stakeholders from across the region on that work. So the updates continue. We continue to connect with, with staff and community leaders and their communities within the county on potential projects that we can bring to the feds or to the state, and are just glad to continue to be a partner with you and with the communities. And I'll stop there with any questions.
Comments, questions?
Well, thanks for having me.
Okay.
Yeah. It's been a, our meetings are quarterly, so I mean, you know, it's been for me to take all in what you all do. It's, the more I'm involved, the more I'm appreciative and amazed of the things that you do and the diversity and range of what you do, as well as, you know, the loans that we get involved with and those opportunities. And I just really, on your second page here, where it talks here about your 17, you know, areas, I mean, it's really wide-ranging. At the meetings, I'm always moved by not only your staff and the commitment of your staff and the outreach, but also the people and the range of thought we have in that conversation. Again, it's, it's, I feel like it's very macro in a certain sense, but your work comes on in and it works in very, to very small businesses. So appreciate your work and glad to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, great comments, and we'll share that with Anna. I appreciate that. I know she and Greg and Joe work very hard to make your meetings robust. I do want to add that he read all 450 of those KMSA grants, and we have a vet in-house, like, how many are there going to be? And somebody said 200, 300, I said over 400, and then I have to apologize, I'm so sorry, right? It may have happened. 450.
Well, I know you've served Clay County well. I mean, obviously, when we see the number $18 million that have come back into the county is, it's real significant. And I'd like the fact that we're seeing some of our businesses be able to use the loan program. I think that's, whether it's new or maintaining to keep going, it's really important. And Greg, I wanted to mention to you that we recently had you come to Clay County to talk about something that's really important on our agenda in Clay County, and that's the water, rural water system. It's, it's an ongoing thing, and I know Commissioner Baer and I serve on that board, and it's a multi-county project right now, but it, and it's something that it's going to take many, many years to complete, but it's so important, you know, to have clean water for every resident in the three counties involved is critical. And your ability to, just that day when we were able to sit down with you, and the ideas and the areas where you thought of and suggested that we go to, obviously, this is something, and I've, I've said it multiple times, but to, to bring water to some of those rural areas, it's obviously very expensive per user. And there's no way that that can ever be accomplished without the help of the federal and state government. We know that as a board, and, you know, so we look for every agency and entity that can help us with that regard, and you guys are very good at that. And so we, hopefully, we can continue moving forward with that. It's just, you know, I often say that that's, bringing water to some of those rural areas, it's no different than broadband. But you had broadband in some of our rural areas, it's critical for those people who live in rural areas to have broadband. They have, most of those families have kids, and those kids need it for their education. And there's nothing more important than clean water for everybody. So, so I just want to thank you for, for being there and listening to us and helping us come up with ideas on ways where we can accomplish that funding.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have anything to, sure. All right. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. And I'm sure we'll see a suggested letter coming later, right?
We'll be gentle.
Okay.
As long as you are, right?
All right. Thank you. All right, our next item is the request approval for to fill a part-time victim witness coordinator position. Mr. Milton.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, we had a resignation. We had Brittany in our office. She was only there a short time, married to one of our sheriff's deputies, and she, she was doing great work, and she was really fitting in well, but I think some of their complications with family and children, and I think they foster as well, and so she needed to resign, so we do need to refill the position. It is a budgeted position, so we're asking to be able to fill that part-time position.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity my entire career to work with people with prosecutors' office, victim witness coordinators, and here in Clay County, we have a good one, we have people work hard at it. This is a vital function for our system of justice, to make sure that people who are impacted by crime have the support they need to, to, you never make them whole, but get them back as close as you can. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to fill the part-time victim witness coordinator position.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Baer, or Commissioner Baer, your second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? All right, Brian, there you go. Next, we have the approval of the 2026 budget timeline. Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. About this time each year, we come forward with you for a request of approval of a timeline, starting back in April. Darren gets a snapshot of our employees. It's really the trigger for our, for the start of our, start of our budget season. And generally, around the middle of May, we come here with our timeline. Budget packets are going out this year around the 23rd to each of our departments, as we've talked before, and we share each year, but specifically this year, work with our department heads to bring forward budgets. heads to bring forward budgets that are, that best meet their needs, but also are good stewards to our citizens. Now, they have roughly three weeks to complete those, those budgets and hand those into Lori's office. Once those, once those are compiled and put together in, in a computer format, we begin to sit down and meet individually with each department head. Sarah has already scheduled those starting in early July. And then those board presentations will become, come before this board for, for presentation. Our goal this year is to be completed by the end of August with those presentations. And so we'll have the opportunity to set preliminary levy by statute before the 30th of September. We are looking at the 23rd. In September this year, there are five, there are five Tuesdays. So in the event that we wouldn't be able to come to a conclusion of support from this board on the 23rd, we would have one extra week on the 30th to come back for. We try to leave one, one week, one week gap for any other feedback. Right now, we're looking at truth and taxation as December 2nd. That will be at 6:00 PM. We've already made, taken board action to shift our meeting, our board meeting to 5:00 PM that evening. And this year, the AMC conference is the following week. And so we're able to do it the first week of December. We would then allow for two, two additional weeks to review and have board input with the final adoption for, for the final levy in the year budget on December 16th. With that, I yield for any questions.
I just want to make note, I, this could be a challenging year from a budget standpoint with what we have going on at the state level. And we have negotiations and all these different type of things going on tonight. I guess I would just ask that the Commissioners do reserve September 30th on your calendars as the date that we may need to hold another meeting in the event that, that we, I don't want to be like the state where it comes right down to the wire. But if need be, I think, I just ask that we all reserve that date in the event we need to have another meeting. With that, are there any questions regarding the timeline? Any questions? Do you?
Do, yes.
Okay. Just before that, when, the very first one, we talk about, and that being today, and it's a set budget parameters, are we?
I think generally, Mr. Chair, one of the things that you've done in the past is once, once you've, Lori's accumulated all of the budgets, and we come in with that first levy document, that is always too high, and you kind of give us our targets at that point. So, so we're probably looking more in that, in that July, July timeframe than than-
I guess, I guess, just like what you did earlier, early on, knowing what we're up against this year, when you, you sent a letter out to all of our outside agencies, letting them know about the, you know, the potential for this year. And I, and I, I do think that, that same message needs to apply internally as well. And I, I know that, you know, our departments always, you know, try to submit what they, what they feel their needs are. And just throwing caution into the wind, so to speak, that, that this might be a very difficult year. Last year, we, we went from a state budget having $18 billion surplus to a, a $6 billion deficit. And a lot of that, right now, you know, many, many millions of that is being planned to shift to counties. And hopefully, with Commissioner Mojo's efforts down there today, some of that might be reduced. But along with other Commissioners. So, but I just, I just want to, you know, suggest that we should be caution, have caution out there in terms of what we're going to be able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have, we've already been having discussions at our management meetings. There's also a narrative memo that goes out with the timeline once this board approves it. And I can tell you that, that shares the sentiments that you just did with us.
Okay. All right. So-
I will make a motion to approve the proposed 2026 budget timeline.
Second.
Right. We have a motion by Commissioner Krabenhoff, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Are you all good with wanting to continue on with the update, or do you need a break?
Good break.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break if that's-
That's good.
All right. We're back in session here. And our next item on the agenda is the Clay County Budget Update.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several different items I'd like to go over with you here today, both going back to 2024 and then looking into our current fiscal year. The first item, though, I want to touch with, touch base with you on is our half-cent sales tax. I try to provide updates three to four times a year on where our figures are coming in. I think we last touched at, at the budget cycle last, last December, beginning of January, where we, we saw a little bit of a dip in both November and December's collection, which ended up resulting in a 2%, 2.19% decrease in, in collections over the entire year at $4,560,340, excuse me, $4,560,341.85. As you recall, the half-cent sales tax was established to cover the law enforcement center and correctional facility. We have three bonds. 2016, we have a GOJail Bonds that deal, dealt with the acquisition of the two city blocks and homes and preparation of the, of the construction. In 2017, we had both GOJail Bonds and GEO Capital Improvement for the Law Enforcement Center. And so the, the total dollar amount just fluctuates a little bit each year. But in 2025, we're anticipating needing $3,946,425. And as you can see, that, that dollar amount does cover the collection of the half-cent sales tax, does cover that dollar amount even today. We did, we received three payments in, in 2024, 2025 timeframe, that all are right around where we've been in previous years. We did receive, we did receive March's, excuse me, April's, our funding yesterday, and that was $318,991.74. And so again, that was one of the higher, higher amounts that we've received over the last seven, seven and a half years. So from a sales tax standpoint, we have been pretty consistent as far as, as far as those payments. We, like I said, we did see a little bit of a dip last year, but we've seen 40% increase of, in sales tax over the previous three cycles. As you recall, initially, we had anticipated $1.6 million of, of sales tax in the first year with an increase up to 2.2 million. Initially, this board had set aside fundings within the levy and also other funding resources such as the $150,000 that we received through the electric, electricity from the windmills. We've since removed those. This is, this will be the fourth budget cycle where we would not have any levy dollars, but only, only a half-cent sales tax fund to cover the principal and interest.
Steve, on that, on that note, it'd be nice to get an update. So like you said, we had originally anticipated a $1.6 million. And now we're, we're upwards at $4 million. At some point in time, it'd be nice to get a, a new forecast out into the future for the remaining life of that bond payment and where we're, where we're setting. I know there's, there's, there's limits to what excess dollars can be used for. But I think as, as we look long-term for capital improvement needs, I think it would be good to see a forecast with the understanding, instead of 1.6 million, we're collecting 4 million. And what does that do later on in the cycle? And the reason I bring that up for our new Commissioners, probably, well, I think Dave, if Dave wasn't the Commissioner at the time, he was certainly involved with the planning on the, on those facilities. But one of the things that we had, had, had incorporated in, in the overall plan was an extension of the correctional facility. And, you know, so just, just as we think about moving forward, you know, there's, there's talk, do you sunset this early? Or, or do you finish, or could we use those dollars? Anyway, I, I just, I think it would be really good for us to revisit the long-term based, based on, I don't see, I, I think it would take a real economic crisis for us to be dropping from 4.5 million to 1.6 million. Right?
Yeah.
You know, over, you know, over the life of what we're doing. So, so clearly, something is going to, it's, it's excellent on our, to our benefit. But at what point in time do we, you know, do we start saying, okay, even with what our future needs are, can we sunset this early?
Sure. Yeah, I can work with our auditor treasurer and put out some projections and come back on another day.
Yeah.
One question for you, Steve, there. With, with that payment that we have is right close to $4 million coming due in 2025, what do we do with the extra money that we do generate from the sales tax? Where does that go?
It currently is in its separate file, and it sits there. So we have, we have access to it. I mean, we could pay that down if that's what the board's wishes were.
Money goes. It's-
So it's sitting, collecting interest, sitting on another-
It's restricted.
Yeah.
It's restricted for the purpose of that project.
And so part of the, the idea of the Commission is to have that money aside. So in the event that we had an off year, there would be funding to cover that. So we wouldn't be in a challenging situation.
How much, how much money is sitting in that account? Do you know that off the top?
I don't know that off the top.
And again, I think that's part of what my, what I'm asking. And so when we look at a future forecast, we can say, okay, here's, here's what we're collecting over and above what we anticipated collecting. How's that balance that Commissioner Baer is talking, asking about? How does that, how can we best use that moving forward?
Okay.
And I, you know, and I, and I think part of that deal, because again, those funds from the sales tax have a very restricted use. And, you know, basically, it was for the law enforcement center, and it was for the correctional facility. As, as Commissioner Abinger will, will remember, he was on the board with us at the time, or worked, was on the committee. There were two components that we left open. There was the additional correctional facility cells to be constructed. And there was also an additional portion above the law enforcement center. That was another, I believe, another 5,000, potential 5,000 square feet. So again, in this long-range planning, as we look at, you know, if we can, if we can incorporate, if those things are, are needed, we'll have to have those conversations with the sheriff. But if those things are needed within the next few years, do we incorporate that capital planning where we can get that done at, at no additional property tax levy to our citizens? I think that's very important, that we start making that plan. All right?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Johnson sends her apologies. She had planned to be here today, but had an appointment. She is watching today. She just did share that we have $3.6 million in debt services right now.
3.6?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a point, concurring with, with your observations, an early sunset may be an option if we have the continued impact of having to get funding through our property taxes on things that the state's shifting over into our responsibility. We would need, we would really want to look at some means of, of giving the citizens a little bit of a break. The problem is with the sales tax, it really is no way reflective of the people that are most strongly impacted by a shift in property taxes. But, you know, it's, it's something we could do.
Again, those, you know, the extra sales taxes that we have collect, that we're collecting, that's very restricted use. You can't, you know, we can't use that, you know, to offset levies.
Right.
You know, so, but we can, what we can, what we can do is if there's future capital needs, we can avoid the, the need to have to have additional levies in the future by using those funds. Because it was in the long-term plan of those two projects. And we have to make sure and check with Lori on that. But I would think that those would qualify for those funds.
Those would be the only two projects? I'm trying to remember what the-
Yeah, because that's the only, when we went and got the permission from the state for that local option sales tax, it was for the correctional facility and the law enforcement center. And when you do that, you know, we can't use that for roads. You know, we can't use that to build a new addition to our government center. It's very restrictive.
What's the end date of the sales tax?
I believe it was a 20-year.
20 years.
20 years, so it's-
37?
It's either 37 or 38, I think, is. Anyway, so, okay, Steve, you can continue on.
All right. Well, and that, that concluded my half-cent sales tax, if there's any other, if there's any, anything.
But just real quickly on that, but if we can have that as part of our, this summer's update.
Sure.
Lori's can be with us. Okay, thank you.
All right. The, the second item that I wanted to just cover was a year in review from, from last year. Again, I'll, I will say that highway, road, and bridge, public health, and solid waste are still waiting on some, some final work. So they are not fully, fully correct yet at this point. But just wanted to touch base on, on the revenues and expenses from 2024. On the, the first, the first, or the one side, looking at the general revenues, I just want to touch base on, on some additional things. From a motor vehicle standpoint, we had an additional $145,000 of revenue. I, I know that this board is taking a great deal of attention to, to the, the motor vehicle area. And so we've added several staff over the last year. The new DMV opened here this last fall. With that said, last year, we generated additional revenue. Wait times continue to, to be lower. And so overall, that is a positive. The treasurer's revenue was up 898%. Just, we'll touch a little bit more on the fund balance section here, but just to kind of give you a general idea, is if you recall, two years ago, we had a pretty significant drop in, in what our investments were worth based on what was happening financially in the United States. Over the last two, two years, we've seen an increase in, in those funds coming back. And so last year, we, we had a market adjustment, which again, is just on paper, as long as you don't sell, was 1.317 million. And so we're getting close to being back to where we were two years ago. And we also, Lori had headed, had $400,000 invested in, or had down for invest, our investments in interest. With the interest rates increased last year, we did see a much more significant, significant increase there of 1.8 million in interest rather than 400,000. So that was a benefit. We did make an adjustment in 2025 to around $1 million. And so we'll see where that, where that comes at the end of the year.
Question there.
Yes.
With that extra money from the sales tax, are we investing that, can we invest it into something like that?
Yeah, Lori, Lori invests all of our, all of our cash into an investment piece of your interest.
But does the investments for the sales tax, does that have to go into that account? Or is that open to use for something else?
I believe the interest can be used in other, other areas, but I-
Is that what's, is that what we're doing?
Um, yeah.
I mean, it's a question.
Sure. Yeah, I will-
We can get answered later, but-
Yeah. Okay. Technology services, we had the increased revenue of 146,000 from our platform, that, the increased platform that we, we house, that we no longer house this year, but had an increase last year. Elections- Elections, uh, we received a grant, uh, last year to, for election equipment, uh, that had an increased, uh, amount there. Our grounds, uh, grounds and building, uh, had a, had a, a decrease. Uh, that's really an in and out, that comes from the family service center, James, uh, James at the juvenile center and the jail, uh, and so whatever, whatever revenue, uh, is, is short, just means that our expenses, uh, were, were lower on the expense side. Um, also planning zoning, uh, we had additional revenues, uh, there. Uh, that, she said, had more to do with necessarily, uh, what payables came through, several of these, sometimes from year to year, they don't get on the right area, and so, uh, so that was that. The, the next area would, we wanna touch bases on the narcotics task force, and had to do with funding. Uh, again, there's an in and an out with the narcotics, so the additional overtime that officers receive there. Corrections, uh, had a, had a, a revenues over expenditures of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Uh, as we talked about throughout last year, uh, our facility was able to utilize some of the empty beds, uh, for other counties. Uh, we specifically helped one county, uh, out, uh, during a few, several months last year, as they were having issues at their jail, uh, and so that translated into additional, additional dollars. Emergency management, uh, has, uh, saw an extreme increase, that's where our, uh, ARPA dollars showed up, or one of the areas where our ARPA dollars showed up, uh, and so that's the reason for that increase. And, uh, overall, we saw, we saw a total revenue fund increase of one hundred and thirty-two thou, one hundred and thirty-two percent, based on what, what, what was planned or budgeted for. Again, roughly, roughly, uh, five, probably seven, for five point five million of that was just in ARPA funds alone, uh, and so, um, just wanted to touch base there. Any, any questions on the revenue section?
So, on the expenditure side, just to, just in total, so where it shows us six million more, was that also because we spent the ARPA money?
That's correct. Yes. So yeah, fi- five point five million of that, of that five point six million in general unallocated is ARPA, and then the other hundred and forty, hundred and eight, forty-eight thousand, that is the house which we purchased over here on, on Ninth Street, showed up in that area. Uh, other, if there's no questions in, in the revenues on this side, we have the, the expenses, just wanna touch base on a, a few different areas there. Uh, internal accounting, uh, just has to do with the timing of the journal entry, uh, and that increase. Uh, when it comes down to information services, we had increased in, uh, staff salaries, and then also last year we had to address some software licensing, uh, mid-year, and that contributed to the increase there. On the elections, again, Lori saves, uh, election funding, uh, for both, uh, our budgets for it in, in the off-years of elections, we had the elections last year, and so you see the expenses, uh, higher than what was anticipated. Um, the next item is the, is the recorders. Uh, there was some equipment, uh, that, that was purchased there that had a little bit of an increase. We stepped down to medical examiners, again, that's just an estimate from, uh, from the sheriff's department, again, depends on the number of examinations that have to happen, so we had a little bit of an increase there. Emergency management, again, as we, we talked about, an in and an out, uh, from the, from the ARPA funds, uh, there, uh, and then again, touching base on the unallocated general, uh, additional, additional ARPA dollars, uh, and, uh, public safety funding also is in that, along with the, the house. Overall, we saw an increase of a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and nineteen, excuse me, nineteen percent over what we had anticipated. Again, five point five of that is, is connected directly, or excuse me, six point, uh, six point eight of that is, is connected to ARPA, so actually we, uh, we were, as a whole, under where we projected.
So, so Steve, I, I asked a question, so under, under emergency management, we had an increase of seven million in revenues over what we had projected, and that was ARPA funds coming in?
That's correct, and that shows.
But then, but then, and I asked the question, did it go out any, but I'm only sho, it's showing here that the expenditures were one point three million.
And then, sorry, Mr. Chair, the other area is in the unallocated.
Okay, that's what I, there was, that's where I was going, so that five point six million is also.
Yeah, so roughly, roughly five point five million, five hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars is ARPA out of, is ARPA money there, uh, the other portion of that is, uh, is the house.
That house we purchased.
The house we purchased, yes, okay.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Yes, yes.
So, the difference between the revenue and the expenditures is roughly three point seven million?
Correct. And so, well, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bear, that'll, when we go to the fund balance page next, that'll show the exact number.
All right.
Uh, if you go to the next page, we have, uh, the road and bridge, social services, uh, area. Uh, the, the first area, again, we'll kinda touch on the, the revenues, uh, in income maintenance, uh, we ended up, uh, having seventeen percent higher than what we anticipated, which, uh, which, uh, was about one point one million dollars of additional revenue. Um, I'm, I'll touch base on the income maintenance side. If you recall, last year, the board made, made the decision, we had two staff that retired that had over seven years of experience and were carrying about four times the case load of a, of a normal income maintenance worker. Um, this board approved the hiring of two additional staff, uh, to, to cover that, uh, and so, uh, you're, you're seeing in, in the, they were able to generate, or part of the team to generate the additional income, uh, but then you also saw, uh, some of the expenses that went along, uh, with that, that was a ten percent increase, so.
And that was, and that was all done in 2024?
Correct.
So even with that, we gained?
Came out ahead, yes, yeah. Um, touch base, uh, on the, the public health, it would be the next area, again, uh, that we saw revenues of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, those, that had to do with the money transfers that, uh, we had from ARPA to detox, the detox project. Uh, solid waste, recycling, we, we saw, uh, commodities have a little bit of an increase in, at least in some of the areas, uh, last year, and so we, uh, we saw thirty-three percent increase of projected revenues based on what we had anticipated. Uh, anybody have any other questions, uh, in, as far as the revenues in, in the, any of these areas?
I have a question on the debt retirement for the law enforcement center.
Yes.
So, the revenues coming in would been forty, four point two million, right? And then the bond payment is three point nine?
Correct.
All right, and then the extra money goes into a separate account?
Yes, that, that three point six million that we talked about. And Lori did text in, just back to your question earlier, the interest from, from the half-cent sales tax does go into the general fund. If no, there's no other questions, I'll move on to the expenses. Uh, unallocated, uh, unallocated in road and bridge of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, uh, was the, the purchase of the Holly shop, uh, that's where that, uh, that showed up, uh, there. Um, again, in, uh, we touched base on the income maintenance already and social services, uh, shifting down, uh, towards the, the middle bottom of the page of, of recycling, again, there were some additional, uh, costs, cost there, um, that were, that were provided for recycling, like, was had a hundred and twenty-four thousand, or excuse me, twenty-four percent increase.
So, Steve, I, I thought.
We did, uh, you're, you're, I know the question you're gonna ask, you are correct, and several years ago, we set the exact dollar amount that each county could request. Um, again, this is, goes back to a timing issue, so if, if they asked for their, if their allocation didn't get marked down until, from the previous year, till 2024, that's how it, it ended up, uh, higher than what it was anticipated.
So if we paid out eight seventy-four and we only, um.
Budgeted seven oh six.
Seven oh six, how, how did, how did?
So that would, so let's say Barnesville didn't ask for their allotment in a timely fashion for 2023, uh, there, it was, when it came to the audit part, they, they ended up having it receded in 2024, so. In a couple of those different, okay, situations, uh, to get to the hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
So, so the twenty-three would reflect that, that they didn't get the money in twenty-three?
Correct, correct.
That number would be under a hundred and twenty-four percent.
Right. Uh, the, the next item, uh.
Just, if I can, just to go, so, at, at, I know Lori has some abilities to put things in the proper year.
Sure.
But at, at what point, you know, because this can be confusing, if, you know, going back, you'd have to go back and look at 2023 to see that it was.
Sure.
Revenue was over expenditures.
Right. I think there, there, there comes a specific date, date from an audit standpoint, that they can no longer go back and make adjustments.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming that, but I just don't know when that is, because right now, you even mentioned that there's, these aren't final numbers, because there's still some adjustments.
Sure.
Being made, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, existing landfill, we ended up having additional revenues, uh, from tipping fees, uh, of, uh, twenty-four percent above what was anticipated, so additional five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Uh, and so that, uh, again, was a positive, I think it goes to, uh, the work the SWAC commissioners and Cory have done, uh, you know, this was the first year, uh, the first year that we've, that we've really, uh, had the full, a full calendar year of expenses, and I think, you know, we still have, we're waiting on Wink, uh, on, on some other, a couple documents, but, uh, based on what we have, uh, I think we're, we're gonna show that we've hit, hit our targets fairly well in solid waste here in the next document. And, uh, so with that, I would yield for any questions on expenditures. Uh, overall, uh, we were, in this group, collectively, um, you know, we, we did fairly well, uh, from a, from a percentage standpoint of, from expenses, uh, in a hundred and three, a hundred and three overall, uh, seventy-eight, one oh one, one hundred, eighty-one, and eighty-five, eighty-five percent of total expense, expenses, so, um, appreciate that from our staff.
Just going back to the resource recovery center, for a minute, on the expenditure side, we budgeted, um, excuse me, yeah, we budgeted two million, two hundred and thirty, and we're showing actual of six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Why, why is there, is there a bond payment not made or something, or?
A, a bond payment, and then I think we have the shift, we shift a portion of the, that five hundred thousand from, um, from the operating, no, from the capital to the operating.
But wouldn't that show up as a, wouldn't that increase at six hundred and ninety-five thousand?
The, let's see, resource recovery.
You can, you can follow up.
Yeah, I'll follow up on this one, that one. Oh, Lori says depreciation of one million.
And the depreciation isn't shown on this? On these statements?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, but not on the statement, yeah. All right, if there's no other questions, then we'll move to the, the fund balance document. Uh, as I mentioned, road and bridge, public health and solid waste, uh, still have, uh, a little bit of work to do, uh, but starting out, uh, starting out in the general, uh, general fund balance, uh, we saw a, an increase, again, uh, one point three of, one point three million in our investments, uh, and then one point eight million dollars in additional interest, uh, which had revenues over expenditures of, uh, three million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, of, of that eighteen million, uh, total, uh, so I brought our total fund balance at twelve thirty-one to eighteen million, eight thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Of that total dollar amount, uh, eight, eight million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, uh, dollars is unassigned, um, with the understanding that, as you recall, this year, uh, the board approved utilization of one point eight-five million dollars of, in, uh, in fund balance, uh, to, to help lower the levy, and so that would be decreased, uh, decreased by that dollar amount. Uh, road and bridge, again, we have a couple different areas of, of work that we need to get done, we'll bring that back at a later time. Social services, uh, had revenues over expenditures of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars, uh, so, uh, of, of that, that brought us to eleven million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-four dollars. Uh, unassigned there is eleven million, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Uh, the building fund, uh, again, uh, for Joe, uh, again, we put in roughly fifty thousand dollars each year into that fund, uh, they, they, which brought us up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, forty-six dollars, uh, and eighty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars, that is unassigned. Uh, in our internal service, uh, we saw revenues over expenditure increase of one point four-nine three million dollars. Uh, again, a, a significant portion of that had to do with the highway, uh, didn't purchase any, uh, any much inventory or new vehicles, uh, as this board knows, they certainly have, uh, started to bank some of those purchases this year. Public health, uh, again, uh, not, uh, that should be done any, any time, Lori said, but right now, we're, we're, uh, at a fund balance of eighteen million, uh, twenty-eight thousand, sixty dollars. If you take a look at that, significant portion of that over the last two years is the addition of detox, uh, and so, uh, that's where you see that larger increase. Solid waste, as I mentioned, uh, again, uh, from a budget standpoint, uh, we're, we're just about spot on, we're, we had expenses over revenues of eighty-seven sixty. Again, uh, we have, uh, we're waiting on, uh, some last journal entries from Wink, uh, on that, and so that, uh, I can bring that forward at a, a further time. Again, public health, solid waste, uh, the family service center and juvenile facility are all enterprise funds, so they operate outside of our, uh, essentially outside of our levy. Uh, family service center is, uh, is, uh, had, um, a budgeted loss of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Uh, if you recall, we budgeted for a four hundred thousand dollar loss, uh, again, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that, again, is depreciation, so, uh, if you take out the depreciation piece of that, uh, we actually, uh, did much better in the family service center than what we anticipated. Uh, and then lastly, um, the juvenile facility, uh, they budgeted for roughly, roughly over a million dollar, uh, loss because of their two-year lookback and the revenues that they get from non-members, uh, they're showing, they're showing, uh, expenses over revenues of two hundred, two hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, uh, but actually, I believe James has indicated that, uh, that's about one point two million dollars of surplus, uh, that they'll.
From previous years.
From previous years, so. So they'll be able to, uh, uh, make those adjustments again for both Clay County and our member counties, uh, to the per diem for, for the following years, so with that, I'd yield for any questions.
Can I, can I just go back to public health? Can you explain the revenues and expenses?
Yeah, so, so, so the, the public, on the fund balance, or?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, so the fund balance increase, as we, we started in 2023, uh, there was a, there was an increase, uh, in investment to the detox facility of five million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, and then the completion of, the completion, uh, of the project in 2024, another eight, eight million, eight hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, uh, was transferred, uh, and so, we have that, the value essentially of the, of the new detox facility, uh, becomes the new, the new fund balance, um, fund balance, uh, bottom line.
So in all these other instances, we're talking cash, aren't we, and so?
So, not in, not in all situations, so like in the, in the general budget, for example, um, you know, the unassigned, the unassigned of the eighteen million is, is eight, eight hundred and seventy-five thou, or eight hundred and seventy, eight million, seven hundred and thirty thousand minus the one point eight-five from, from this year, uh, so some of those are assigned to different funds. Um, the juvenile center does have. The Juvenile Center does have some, you know, has some responsibility, um, to, uh, to the, uh, the bond payment. Uh, but Lori doesn't, didn't have the Juvenile Center, for example, broken down into what is, what is unassigned there.
So just again, going back to Public Health, at the end of twenty twenty three.
Yep.
We had eight million, eight hundred and ninety five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. That's not, that's not cash?
Yeah, no, that it's, the detox building adds to the fund balance because it's an enterprise fund.
I see, okay. So why wouldn't the value of the Family Service Center be incorporated into the val, into the? I mean, that Family Service Center's got a significant value. Why wouldn't that, that's an enterprise fund, why wouldn't? I guess I'm confused on that.
Yeah, I, I wonder how I could, I'll, I can certainly check with Lori. I'm guessing some of it may have to do with the depreciation portion of it.
I'll depreciate it out.
Yeah. But.
Depreciation, that's a. It's a line item that's just, you're taking money out that you're not writing a check for.
Right, yep.
And it.
Going back to the Public Health one more time, when that goes that to the eighteen million, that's the value of the building. That made that increase?
Correct, that's correct.
So going back to Detox, is that building fully paid for then?
Um.
Or are we paying a bond payment somewhere or?
No, we don't have a bond payment on the, on the detox that was covered by, by ARPA dollars, uh, some opioid funding, and then a small uh, about half a million dollars from our, from our, um, fund balance.
So the county owns that free and clear?
Yes.
Correct, yep.
The only, the only other one that we have a bond on is the D M B.
Do you think we should split off Detox off?
So, so Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bear, that is one thing that I do have, uh, to talk to our finance committee this year. I think that, uh, from an operational standpoint, there's always going to be a connection to Public Health just because of the state statute requirements. Uh, but I think that's one of the things that I want to talk with our finance committee, uh, this year about, about splitting that off now that we've had several, several months of operation. I think that it would make sense to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused on, on these, when we're referring to these fund balances and we're taking the asset value and putting in our fund balance. I mean, you look at Road and Bridge and we're showing seven point five million dollars in, in value there. I, I mean, we've got to have, you know, the value of all of our bridges and everything or?
No, I think that goes back to the enterprise portion fund of that, that Road and Bridge is, is part of our, is part of our just overall budget where the pub, the Public Health, Detox, Juvenile Center, um, has the, has that as part of their enterprise.
Yeah, you know, from a standpoint of being able to, uh, deal with budgets when it comes to our enterprise funds, we, so we've got put solid waste as a enterprise fund. So, you know, when we're looking at this, when, when we're comparing, when we do an annual budget and then we're, and we do a, you know, you anticipate your revenues and you anticipate your expenditures. And here it's kind of confusing because here, all of a sudden now you're incorporating other assets into the, into the fund.
Sure.
Uh, you know, when we want to look at budgeting purposes, we want to deal with just
Cash.
Ash.
And not depreciation.
And that, and yeah, and not depreciation either, so. And again, these are not for today, but I, you know, I think, I think we need to.
Clarity.
Yeah.
Can you, can you tell us, you don't have to tell us today, but how much cash we actually have that we have that we can use for the budget cycle in these, in this balance fund?
Well, I think, again, you know, one of the things that that we've, we, as a county, um, you know, when we go through the audit process, the, you know, the auditors like to see six months of operating.
That's understandable.
Yeah, well, and that's.
Um, and and so, uh, again, yeah, a portion of, a portion of, uh, of that would be looking at, as a county, we don't have a, we don't have a set policy that, that sets, um, where, you know, where we want to be from a, from a cash standpoint.
Yeah.
Um, but certainly it's something that, that as far as our, you know, as part of this explanation that this board's asked for, we can provide that.
Cause isn't that eight, eight million, seven hundred and seven, seven hundred?
Well, in general.
Minus a hundred and eight.
Yeah, so in general, right now, well, as of, as of twelve thirty one, it was, uh, eight point seven million dollars with the understanding that this board put one point eight five million dollars towards this budget. So, um, you know, so we're, so, um, in order to lower the levy, and so that it, it wouldn't be eight point seven.
Yeah.
So it'd be.
But is that in taking into Public Health, solid waste?
No.
Moving on.
Nope, these are, all these are, each are separate, separate areas.
Can we have a number for all of it?
Um, well, she has, I mean, she has everything laid out, uh, other than, uh, other, well, she has everything other than uh, the Internal Service Account, which would, we probably wouldn't want to, we have access to that, uh, but we wouldn't
Yes.
spend that. So, so right now, up in the top, in general, Road and Bridge, Social Services Building, um, she has, she has the unassigned as of twelve thirty one, twenty three, and the only one that wouldn't be, uh, correct as of twelve thirty one would be that, the Road and Bridge, which they're still, they're still working through.
I know, but you got to get Detox out of that, the building out of Public Health and.
Right, yeah, oh crap.
That's not cash.
Those are, and and again, those are outside of the levy, the, the Public Health, Solid Waste, Family Service Center, Juvenile Center are enterprise funds and.
I know, but if there's money sitting in there, can we take that money and put it towards the levy?
Well, yeah.
So, so Public Health, you did, this year you utilized a half a million dollars out of their, uh, out of, out of their account towards the, towards the budget. Um, Solid Waste is, is specifically to, um, I mean, they do provide, they provide roughly a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars annually to our general fund. Uh, again, as a, as a board, you could make a determination that, uh, if they were in a financial spot, that you could, you could make that shift, uh, as you already do. Uh, Family Service Center generally is, is, you know, shows a, shows a loss because of, uh, because of the, uh, because of the depreciation. Uh, and again, the, the challenging part, as we've talked about in Building Committee and as a group, that at some point, there'll have to be some decisions made there as from a, from a renovation standpoint. Uh, and then Juvenile Detention has a contract, uh, with its member counties, um, that, that it, the first option goes back to the members. Uh, the, the, James and the commissioners can make a request to have funds, uh, shifted like they've done at different times to fix roofs or put in a new gym floor, floor recently. Uh, but, but generally that part of the agreement that we have with them, because they also then, if the Juvenile Center were ever to lose money, they would also have to share in that cost. Uh, and so, um, so that the, the Public Health and the Solid Waste, that we would have, the Juvenile Detention, uh, would probably be pretty limited.
Just to, just to clarify, so, so going back to the general.
Yes.
In twenty twenty three, we had fourteen million, three hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred and, and that was, that's cash?
Well, that, that was not cash, that was a, that was, uh, a combination of, of, of cash and also then our investments. So that's where that, when we.
Well, that's, that's cash, I, I.
Or, or in the investments buildings?
No.
Well, the, the investments, the investments, no.
Three M Fund or wherever the money is, but it's, it's, it's money.
Correct, correct.
It's not, it's not, it's not a capital asset.
No.
It's money.
Right.
And so, so we raised, so we have an additional three point six million in twenty twenty four, and, and you told us that, what, one point eight million of that was due to interest?
One point five, one point five came out of, came out of general, or excuse me, one point three five came out of general, a half a million came out of Public Health. So for a total of three, one point eight five. But, but yeah, five hundred came out of Public Health, one point three, one point three came out of general.
Oh, so we shifted from Public Health to General?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But then we also had more interest.
Yeah, we had one point, one point three, one seven, or excuse me, one point eight in interest when we budgeted for four hundred thousand. And then we had.
Revenues over expenditures.
We had revenues, some revenues over expenditures, and the other was the paper, the paper investments, uh, of one point three, one seven. Again, when we saw that, we saw the significant loss in twenty twenty two in our investments, uh, we, we've had two years now of, of, uh, of gaining those funds back through the, the market.
But I mean, that, that goes, that goes to show in previous years. So at one point in time, we, in twenty twenty one, we had ten million in cash, and then in twenty twenty two, we had eight million.
Right.
But now we're.
Yeah, so, yeah, so just the, the two, the interest in the, the paper, the paper investment was three point, over three point one million dollars of the three point six by itself last year for the, for the revenues over expenditures.
So we're sitting on eighteen million dollars of cash and investments?
Mm-hmm. In the general fund?
In the general fund.
General fund.
Yes.
That's unassigned.
Well, the unassigned, the unassigned is.
What, what's the difference between unassigned and?
Well, I think that the issue is why we didn't lose money in twenty twenty two is we didn't sell our investments.
Yeah.
We would have sold our investments at where they were.
Yeah.
And so, so, so they're tied, some of that is cash, some of it's tied up in.
CDs.
Yeah.
But it's, it's still money.
Right, right.
How much of that is investments of the eighteen million?
Well, so it'd be.
If you take out the eight, eight point seven?
Roughly, yeah, nine, nine point three million.
So that, 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 when you say assigned, that's where, it's in, in investments?
Yeah, correct.
Where if you take it out early, you could.
Yeah, yeah, you get penalized or.
But it's, you know, but it's still money, but yeah, anyway, yeah, so it's. And again, that, all of that kind of goes into play for, you know, when we have to make considerations of what the state auditor says about the six month supply.
Correct.
Which I've got documents from AMC, AMC doesn't share that.
Sure.
AMC doesn't share that we have to have six months. I've got documents that show what they suggest we have, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, this, this is, yeah, it's been a good conversation this morning, but.
Any other questions on fund balance? And we'll, we'll work to get some of that in for questions that you had also, uh, for that.
And again, Steve, if I, if I can, and, and I, I don't want to create additional work for, for Lori either, but if we could, if we could kind of separate out even from our, our, um, our funds like Solid Waste and those, to get an idea of what cash we have versus what, and split out separate from the assets that we have.
Yep.
Within those fund balances. You know, if Solid Waste had three million dollars or four million dollars or six million dollars in cash last year, what do we have this year? And then everybody has to understand that we're required, and for example, in Solid Waste, you have to have money reserved for closure, post-closure and all that. So there's, there are issues that you have to reserve money for, even though it's in the bank. Yeah, and Detox too, separating that out, it's. Okay, do you want to?
Yeah, tw, just had a twenty twenty five update. Again, uh, this is through, uh, through April, so about thirty three percent of the year. Again, the challenging part that, that we have when it comes to revenues is we're often, often a month to six weeks behind. Uh, but just wanted to touch on a, on a couple of different revenues on the front side of this document. Uh, again, the auditor standpoint, uh, under auditors, we have revenues of three hundred and fifty three percent already, based what was budgeted. That's a journal and, journal entry, uh, uh, from last year. Uh, again, that covers mortgage registration and deeds. Uh, the, the next area, county attorneys, um, again, eighty nine, eighty nine percent of our, our revenues were down eighty nine percent. Uh, again, two different things is they bill quarterly, uh, to, to our different departments, uh, and, uh, and it actually is a one transaction at the end of the year. Uh, and so, uh, that's why that shows, uh, shows that will show a loss throughout the year until the final one. Emergency Management, again, uh, we had some of our final revenue dollars from ARPA, uh, that show up in that area, both in the, uh, revenues and the expenses. Uh, and then also showing up in the unallocated general of expenses, uh, for, for those funds. Uh, and then, uh, unallocated general sits at, uh, zero percent. Again, uh, this is where our tax collection is, is, uh, it comes into play, uh, and so that has not shown up, obviously, yet this year. Um, anybody have any other questions on, on revenues? Again, like I say, they generally sit, uh, sit, uh, a month to six, six weeks behind. Uh, expense wise, if there's no other questions, uh, we're, we're sitting in, in good position, uh, at thirty three percent of the year. Again, just want to highlight the, the emergency management that we touched, touched on, uh, and also, uh, unallocated general. Uh, this is where our insurance, uh, insurance comes out, uh, and so, uh, uh, buildings and also our, uh, other insurance. And so we're at sixty three percent, uh, uh, of the year again, but the building piece of that is just a one-time payment. Uh, and so, uh, we're in a solid position, uh, there. Anybody have any questions on the front side of, the front side of twenty twenty five, uh, year-to-date expenses? Uh, if not, we'll switch over to, to Road and Bridge, uh, excuse me, the Road and Bridge side, uh, again, from, from an, an expense, excuse me, a revenue standpoint. Uh, again, some of these areas are just one-time allotments, and so we don't have anything that really stands out, uh, from a, from a concern standpoint in the revenue section, again, uh, with revenues being behind also. Uh, so I, I just moved to expenses, again, there's no significant area of concern here. Uh, again, just want to highlight one area, again, is the debt retirement, uh, Law Enforcement Center, that's a one, one-time payment, so we're at eighty four percent. Uh, again, and so, uh, that's actually in a, a better spot than what we had, had anticipated, uh, but that is a one-time payment. So with that, I'd, I'd yield for any questions on the, on the twenty twenty five. Uh, from a financial standpoint, we appear to be in, in a good position from where, uh, we came in, uh, budgeted from each department.
Questions? Aaron, do you want to give us an update?
Hopefully mine won't be quite as confusing. But this is going to be an interesting year. Uh, as you know, we have nine unions, uh, all of them are going to be up for negotiations this year for twenty twenty six and onward. We have received, uh, three desire to negotiate, that's like the initial paperwork that we say, that we get from the unions. Those are from the deputies, the L E C Admin Assistance and the Corrections, and I've lined up our first negotiations with them on either the twenty fifth, twenty sixth of June or the second of July. I talked to, uh, Josh yesterday, and we kind of went over some of our, uh, ideas on going forward. Um, this is really the first year that I've never had a COLA already set for the following year, um, which is kind of unique. I, I did change the way that I do the grid this year, where, uh, what I provided Lori and M C I T. In, in April, I have to provide M C I T with a, uh, personnel, uh, idea on a, on a payroll estimate for the following year. And so what I did not do is, for the M C I T portion, I used a templated, uh, percentage. But for Lori's purposes, I just gave her what people were making this year, and then she will add the, whatever the COLA, uh, comes up to be. The other thing that I learned from M C I T is that I can always update that, their numbers, uh, as late as November, which I actually never knew that before. I thought it, April was the, the cutoff date, but, uh, they said that we can update. So I can rerun these numbers because a lot changes from April to November with people leaving and, and everything else. The other thing that is unknown is the benefits, the county contribution, of course. Uh, we are going, we, we, in the past five years, or past four years, we've had a designated increase each year. Um, this year was nine percent, but that four-year guarantee is up this year. So next year, we're going out for R F P for the health benefits, and, uh, hopefully that comes back a little bit better. So that's kind of where we are. Getting back to the negotiations, um, like I said, I have the deputies, the L E C Admin Assistance and Corrections, uh, scheduled. We'll probably start collecting data because AMC runs their salary survey from the first of the year and through April, and then in June and July, they come out with the, um, data for all the counties on what, um, increases they're making and. And then in June and July, they come out with the, um, data for all the counties on what, um, increases they're making and, and COLAs that they're giving. So I think after we get that AMC data, we will know a little bit more on what's going to be, uh, the normal COLA that people are giving. Um, the other thing, of course, that you already know is that the legislatures, legislators are still in session. There's a lot of, uh, contention on the paid leave and the fifty-fifty split. But what I've seen from some of the, uh, counties that have already negotiated, as a matter of fact, the ones I got information on, they have really done fifty-fifty. They're not doing seventy-thirty or sixty-forty or anything like that. And I think that's, will be, of course, what we'll probably be shooting for as well.
Um, does that take effect in two thousand and twenty-six?
Correct, yeah, January first, two thousand and twenty-six. Um, that is included in the numbers that I gave Lori, so that is already included at the, uh, point four-four percent. Um, I think what's going to help us in our negotiations this year is we did do a wage study last year, and, which was implemented this year. And so I think we have pretty good numbers from that wage study, so we're not really out of line with a lot of the other counties that we're seeing. There are some counties that are way high on their COLAs, but they probably haven't given a COLA, or they're just counties that normally give a, a large COLA. But, um, we'll, we'll dive into those numbers a little bit more. So the first negotiations with all the, um, unions is going to be basically getting their information and their, their demands from them to us. And then we'll, I'll put together my big spreadsheet that I did last time and kind of lay it all out on what their demands are, and then bring that to the board. We'll have a closed session, and then I'll know a lot more on what we're dealing with, uh, as far as, uh, requirements and requests go.
Um, Darren, just real briefly on the, on the Paid Family Leave Act, and you said you gave those numbers to Lori and it's anticipating it's fifty-fifty, right?
Yep.
I wonder, could we, and maybe Steve, could we ask Lori to create a, an additional line item for that? So that we can start to monitor those costs?
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, as, right now, you know, they're saying it's what, eight percent or?
Yeah.
Who knows what that's going to go to, but.
Yeah, I think you, you factored, uh, I want to say the full, full percentage at point eighty-eight was right around just under four hundred thousand.
Yeah, um, the, the point four-four percent is about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, based on the, the.
Can, but I guess what I'm asking, can that, is there a way that Lori could incorporate that as a separate line item?
We, we can certainly track it through our HR payroll system. I don't know if Lori, how, I don't know the line items on how she would want to do that, but we could certainly pull it at any time and probably get the, the exact tax that we've paid. Because as the employees change, come and go, the amount that we pay is going to be based on their, 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 their pay.
But it's a brand-new expenditure to the county.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, um, with that, it, it, you know, I say that we normally have three, maybe four negotiations with each of the unions. So I, we're, we are starting a little earlier this year. Uh, usually I, I start around September to get them done. Um, but that's why we want to start in June, because there's a lot to talk about. And, uh, hopefully we, we can get them all negotiated within three or four sessions with them. So that's what I'm shooting for right now.
Well, I mean, we have a preliminary levy to set by September.
Right, right. Yeah, and I, I think once we, you know, we do a lot of pattern bargaining, so once we get an idea of the first COLAs after we have our closed sessions and everything, we'll have an idea of where we're going to be with that. And I, and I can, I can then, the way I set up the grid this, this year, I can easily change it to whatever COLA is decided upon. And then I can rerun the numbers for the payroll. And, uh, we can have a pretty good update later in the year rather than just working off the April numbers. All right, with that, I'm open for questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's go into committee reports. Ezra, do you want to start?
On last Wednesday, I had the Clay County Collaborative, where we set the agenda, and we set the agenda, and we added Cal, CAP LP to that. We set the budget at, uh, Clay County Collaborative, where we approved fifteen program names and added Cal, CAP LP to that program. So it'd be sixteen total to get the grant money. That's pretty much what we discussed there. Mr. Krabinoff was there also, he's the chairman of that committee, so I'll let him go farther into that. And then Thursday, last Thursday, I had the Yellow Ribbon, I went there with Mr. Ebner, and I don't have much to report there, the people there are doing good work, but yeah, that's, I gave an update on the tribal situation with the land on three thirty-six there. And that's all I have for my committee reports. Chairman?
All right, Dave?
Thank you. Last Wednesday on the seventh, I attended a meeting with Dan Molly and Mike Ritz and Shelley Carlson from Moorhead, and Commissioner Nelson from Becker County, and Commissioner Jacobson from Norman County, with Lake Agassiz, uh, Regional Library Administration people, uh, trying to negotiate a, um, lease agreement with City of Moorhead for Lake Agassiz's office space in the new library being constructed. Uh, we covered some issues, we, I'm going to take it back this Thursday to the Lake Agassiz Board, and, and we'll discuss it further. Uh, we really didn't come up with a, a solid, uh, number to discuss, but we'll try and get, move that forward. Uh, the next day, Tuesday, the eighth, I went beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which Commissioner, uh, Bear's already touched on. Uh, general business things, we did have a report from Kirk Cannon. Uh, he is, uh, holding down the fort basically for Becker County right now with their veteran services. They've got a new uncertified VSO. Uh, so Kurt's having, uh, he's agreed to work with their, uh, veterans as well. Uh, and sort of a field training position, I guess, but, uh, he's, he's covered a lot of, he's covered a lot of business. He's doing a good job on it. And that completes my reports.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chair, uh, going back to Wednesday on the seventh, uh, again, Commissioner Bear, Bear already brought it, the first part of the collaborative meeting that we had. Just to go back, um, some things that I learned on these grants that we, uh, had applications for, as you mentioned, we had sixteen of them. Uh, they amounted, uh, it was, uh, really, um, good to get these grants out at higher, higher dollar amounts, helping our schools and other providers. So anyway, uh, we put out four hundred and forty-eight, almost four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So, um, that's, uh, a big help to these places. And that's, and then we will actually do our budget for the year next meeting. On Thursday, um, I had the Class WCD, uh, monthly board meeting, uh, for water sediment control basin projects, some, uh, farmstead windbreaks, and, well, otherwise mainly general business and really, uh, about, uh, what's going to happen with the legislature. Obviously, I have concerns about their SWCD aid, the family paid medical, or, uh, paid, uh, family medical, uh, acts, uh, reduction invasive species and riparian aid, and we're also affected by the same things. Um, I think that's probably what I'd say about that, their tree plantings, uh, our jobs are going, they're about a third complete. And there's still potted trees that people, uh, are interested in for their farmsteads. Um, on the, on Monday, yesterday, uh, started out the day with the AMC legislative update. Uh, we'll have full detail when Jenny comes back, because she's down there working, and I'm really glad she is. So we'll see where the shifts go, uh, to the counties. Um, yeah, and we'll just see, and there just, there seems to be quite a bit of difference between the Senate's approach and the House's approach. And, and, uh, we'll just see as it all comes together, and what they have to have is a universal budget target, and they need that very soon. So that's what we're working at. Last night, I was at the, uh, monthly meeting at the Buffalo River watershed. We had a hearing at five o'clock on ditch nine, that's the ditch where the roundabout is, on, uh, Highway fifty-two and County Road, uh, twelve. And, uh, everything, um, even the landlords were there that are mostly affected. Everybody's right in line on this thing. Um, and again, just the importance of this roundabout, it was noted again, uh, we've had eighteen crashes there over ten years at higher speeds and one fatality in twenty-three. So, um, that can't get in soon enough, I think, with, to help the higher-speed traffic flows that go through that, that intersection. Um, one thing I will bring up, um, like to give a little detail to it. So there was a hearing on the upper, uh, Buffalo River, a project all in Becker County. And the reason I want to talk about it, it's the first time I've had it come up, and, or seen it, and, and maybe it has before. But anyway, long story short of it, they made a water, uh, district area, manage, area where the assessments would be for a project put in. And the appointed manager from Becker, along with the boys from Becker County, felt it was wrong that they're footing the bill for this area, but they're the ones giving the contributing water to this project. And we do that down the system, right, all the way down. Anyway, they were just adamant about it, that they thought it was a decent project, but they didn't want to pay for it. And so the, the whole thing was denied. And that, um, I'm just going to say, our, our representative, Bill Davis in particular, uh, really stood up for us. They were trying to make it so it'd be on the whole water system. And Bill was very clear, Lake County is seventy-two percent of paying that bill, and that's not right, that's not fair. And, you know, we, and, and what's concerning to me as this goes on, and who knows? Maybe my next, Be- Becker will kind of, you know, reevaluate. But we don't have much time because we have, uh, about a one-point-seven million of four-point-million-dollar project. If we don't get that done in a certain timeline, we lose those funds. So I mean, and that would kick it off. But, um, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned that it would set a precedent, right? And then, and they want to make it bigger? Well, you know the people down below are, are going to fight that, we're going to be back in the same spot. So just want to bring the awareness, and, and I, I really, really do, um, uh, thank, uh, our representative, uh, Davis for putting this on that one. My view.
All right. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, yeah, all right.
I only had one meeting this last week, and that was Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and we, um, we continue to have, uh, discussions regarding the Comstock project. And I'm meeting at noon today with Justin and Chris Bakigard regarding the, the component that was within the city limits of Comstock. As we are all aware, we agreed to hold off on that till after the legislative session. Comstock is voicing some concerns about delaying that project, so we're meeting today, and we're going to be meeting with Comstock, I believe, on the twenty-second of May. And then we also talked about the pickup purchase, which we acted on today. And, and then there was, we did have some other discussions regarding the Buffalo Red River watershed district and some of the ditches. Uh, and the Buffalo Red Water has asked our engineer if we would consider, ever consider a cost share in fixing some of these, sloping issues, or, yes. Um, so that's more, that's more conversation to be had on that, so. And then the last thing that we had was just a brief discussion. There is some information that came out regarding the city of Fargo, uh, their Twelfth Avenue to Fifteenth Avenue North Bridge Project. Now, they're looking at, um, raising the elevation of that, and of course, right, as I've mentioned here at our board meeting, that's a really important bridge to have open. And so I just, you know, we had that discussion at the highway tracking level to make sure that, um, we lend whatever's, you know, support there is for that project to move forward. Not, not financially by, you know, but it's, it's, it's a really important bridge project for.
What's the raise on that? I'm just curious.
Well, I think they're, you know, they're, what they're want to raise it to would be the new in-town hundred-year flood plain with the diversion. So that would be thirty-seven feet. So I think, so they'd be raising that quite a, quite a bit, you know, and I, on the, on, right in that particular area on the Moorhead side, it's, you know, it stays lower quite a bit further to the east, whereas on, on the Fargo, that's the one area on the Fargo side where it rises really quick up to, you know, so there's some maps out there that show the impacted area or whatever. But anyway, that's just, I, I just think that's a really important bridge. Moorhead and Clay County benefits from that bridge from an economic development standpoint. We have a lot of people who come over here to, to use that. So that's all I have for my committee report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in Highway Tracking, which has been well-covered. Uh, also had the conversation with some of our administrative groups from Clay County, excuse me, about, uh, about rural cities and dispatch. We'll be having a, uh, update meeting in July, uh, with our different rural cities. I met with Dan Molly, Derek Lapointe, and Peyton Masterra, uh, and coordinate, coordinations regarding the, the casino project. Uh, basically shared that with them, uh, the boards this action took in assigning two commissioners, uh, to any potential committee. Uh, we're meeting again, uh, this week's in, in hopes of having, uh, the impact or the, the feedback, excuse me, from, uh, from those cities as far as having involvement. Also looking at, uh, having township involved in that. Um, with, I, that afternoon, I, we'd previously talked with Commissioner Neil Gulzweg from Cass County. Uh, that, yet, on the seventh, I spoke with Josh Stevenson, uh, the Cass County Administrator of North Dakota, or, excuse me, Minnesota. Uh, while it's a different tribe, that they, they're, uh, they have a, or, I guess, stand out of having a good relationship, uh, with, uh, with the tribe in their area, and spoke with them, kind of better understand their procedures and operations with the tribe. Uh, met that afternoon with Robert Wilson, uh, Dan Molly, uh, talked about, uh, budget, budget discussions and also the legislative impacts on both states. Uh, on the eighth, I met with Joel Olson and Mark Sloan, uh, we're working on a capital planning, uh, document to bring to the building committee here this summer, uh, that, uh, eventually we hope to bring before the board, just as a, kind of more of an informational, uh, status of, of, of our, our year, essentially of the county. Uh, yesterday, I participated in the AMC legislative update. Uh, again, one of the positive things that we did hear yesterday is Senator Abler, Senator Hoffman, uh, did pass out of the, out of, of the Senate, uh, a bill which would shift, which would remove almost all of the cost shifts, uh, from the Senate. Uh, they're instead asking for two task forces, uh, to look into, uh, look into the impacts of the budgets on a human service standpoint. Um, and I think today is tax committee, uh, and, uh, again, I think there's some interesting portions that, uh, potential that will come out of there. Uh, we'll see if that, the omnibus bill passes. Uh, and then we, during this time, we also did receive an email from AMC. Uh, they're requesting counties, uh, report down to St. Paul tomorrow at, uh, ten, or, excuse me, Thursday at, uh, ten AM, uh, for a county at the Capitol. Uh, one of the things that we heard yesterday is that, uh, the impacts of the, of the board's request to have a letter sent to the governor, to, to legislature is having an impact. Uh, and so they want to focus on the shifts, uh, from, from that standpoint. Um, just a, a few note, notes. Just a few notes here, this week, y'all should have received an email, the AMC district meeting in Fergus Falls is going to be held June fourth. Agenda is going to follow. A, just a couple other things, we are, Clay County is under a red flag warning. We're one of seventy-seven counties with, are in extreme danger of fire. We had a few different fires that were going on within the county yesterday, according to the sheriff, and so we're on a do-not-burn ban. Also, just, we received a, had a conversation with Derek Lapointe, Clay County, City of Moorhead and Downtown Moorhead, Inc., received an outstanding achievement in economic development for the work that's being done on DG Fuels by the Trade and Industry Development Magazine, and so I'll pass this around, there's a story on that project, but I wanted to highlight the, the success of, of that. And with that, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quickly, on Wednesday, I met with IT and HR to discuss some personal action forums and workflow changes. Thursday and Friday, I was on vacation, which was nice. Monday, I also attended the AMC update negotiations, discussions with Josh Hagan, our labor attorney, which we've already covered, and had a meeting with HR regarding some personnel issues yesterday. That was my report.
Thank you. Sarah, anything, of course? All right, we're adjourned.